Motion for the minutes. Motion. I repeat. Second. I repeat. Mr. Asutola?
Yes.
Mr. Duranov? Yes. Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Tarr?
Yes.
Mr. Corla?
Yes.
Okay, communications, which are on file in the Board of Security's office. Please.
All right, good evening, everyone. We are going to open with our student recognition ceremony this evening. And we do this three times a year, and it's really to celebrate a number of the accomplishments based upon whether it was fall season, winter season, or spring season. And I think that this evening you're going to see the real range of the talented students that we have across the district. And it's an important part of our community to bring our students and their parents and guardians here together to celebrate those accomplishments. We believe strongly in bringing everybody out and making sure that we honor the students that bring so much honor to our school district. So before we get started with that, we'd like to call the administration from Freehold Township up at this point in time. So we have been... Freehold Township High School is fortunate to have received a $10,000 model classroom grant from the Ocean First Foundation. And Ocean First from Manalapan received a similar grant, I believe it was two years ago, might have been last year. And Ocean First have been terrific partners to the Freehold Regional High School District. And here representing them this evening are Joe Antasca, who is the Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer, Nina Alawario, who is the Senior Vice President, and Linda Petralito, who is the Vice President. So I'd like to call them up. And I'm going to walk down for the photo op.
We don't want to hold up the students much at all. But just as a little bit of history, the Ocean First Foundation was formed in 1996, and it was actually the first foundation formed as a result of a bank going public, an IPO of a bank. And now that's a pattern. So you'll see that there are probably 100 foundations like this. But this one in particular was funded with $13 million in 1996. And thus far, we've been able to distribute right in our community, which is generally Monmouth and Ocean County, and now more recently some five counties in the South. But $30 million. It's still endowed with about $37 million. So the endowment has been through the growth of our stock. So it's symbiotic. As we grow, we give more and more back to the community. One, there are several focuses: healthcare, senior living, arts and culture. But education is a huge focus for us. So at the foundation, we've given several million dollars to educational opportunities such as a model grant program for the last several years. We have a media center program, and we have a scholarship program whereby we issue over $200,000 a year in scholarships to graduating seniors from schools like Manalapan that are in our service area, that are attending local universities and colleges and community colleges. So it's really important for us to see us develop the students in our area, that they can become productive adults and stay maybe within New Jersey. So it's our pleasure to be here tonight, thrilled that Freehold Township submitted its great application and won. And Nina will tell you just a little bit about that application.
Thank you, Joe. Just to expand on what Joe was talking about with the scholarships, that is, any graduating senior from high schools in our footprint that are going to Monmouth University, George Concord University, Ocean County College, or Brookdale are eligible to apply for the Ocean First Grant right through the school. All guidance counselors are aware of that. And this year, we've doubled that commitment because we are including southern regions and will be giving $400,000 for scholarship money in 2017. So let me tell you a little bit about your school and what makes you different. There were 86 schools that applied for our grant. We were only giving 15. We were only giving five to the high schools. So you think of that number. Now, they have to come up, they have to write these grants, and they have to be innovative. They're not your regular run-of-the-mill grants. Check off this box, tell us, you know, the dollar amount we need, you know, just be very basic. They had to be creative, collaborative. They had to reach deep. They had to come up with a theme. They had to include other sectors of the school. It had to be inclusive. It had to meet so many challenges. And then what happens is it goes before a panel, a panel of business people, those that serve on our foundation board, come from every different walk of life. And I think there's only one on the board that comes from education. So their views of these, of how these grants are written are very different. So people in your school got together, especially your principal and your vice principal, and they said, "Let's challenge ourselves, and let's go out of the box. Let's go get some money that we're not just getting because it's owed to us from the tax rolls or from the state grants. Let's go out there and let's find some additional money to make our classrooms better than other classrooms." And this is what sets you apart. Freehold Township High School will use their grant to provide an innovative collaborative space that is used all day, every day, across all grade levels and courses to promote inquiry-based learning and problem-solving. A think tank, teachers will be able to reserve the classroom to support project-based learning with students participating in active learning experiences that bridge all disciplines of study. Research has shown that project-based learning is critical to student mastery of the key competencies essential for college and career readiness, including critical thinking, conflict resolution, and collaborating to reach a shared goal. Through project-based learning, instructors and staff will support students in developing a deeper understanding of content, improving the skills necessary for collaborative learning, and applying knowledge and skills within college and career settings. This is the difference. Your school is also going to commit $30,000 out of your 2016-17 operating budget to begin the transformation of the targeted classroom. With their grant, they will add interactive technology features and provide teaching staff with professional development. That's what sets you apart. That's what makes you unique and different. Congratulations on being one of the recipients of our $10,000 model classroom grant. Thank you. So to get a deep look at the real check, the ceremonial check was already given, but the real check is being delivered today to Elizabeth Higley, your school principal, and Dr. David Legley, your, he is your assistant vice principal. Thank you.
To feel to motion first, have been a terrific friend to the Freehold Regional High School District, and with all the capacity that we have in our six high schools, I would have been surprised if one of our high schools didn't receive the grant. So I feel good about that. We're going to welcome our student portion, and we are going to begin this evening with Mr. Boylan from Marlboro High School.
Welcome to this evening's recognition ceremony. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Sampson for reporting us this night to recognize our students in the district. Thank you very much. And also to thank the parents for all the support that they've given us throughout the course of the year. Shortly, many of my colleagues and I will be acknowledging commended students and semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program and National AP Scholars. I would like to first take the time to explain the criteria utilized to acknowledge these outstanding accomplishments. The National Merit Scholarship Program is a United States Academic Scholarship Competition for recognition and university scholarships. The program began in 1955. About 1.6 million juniors in more than 22,000 high schools entered the program by taking the 2015 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Of these 1.6 million students, approximately 50,000 high scores qualified for this recognition. There are varying categories of recognition. Commended students. About 34,000 students, or two-thirds of the high scores, are recognized for their scores and for their academic promise. Semifinalists. About 16,000 students, or one-third of the high scores, are the highest-scoring entrants in each state and are also recognized for their academic promise. This nationwide pool of semifinalists represents less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors. Tonight, we're also acknowledging the students who are National AP Scholars. Advanced placement examinations are taken each May by students at participating educational institutions. The tests are the culmination of a year-long advanced placement course. The AP grades are reported to students, high schools, colleges, and universities in July, are on the AP's five-point scale. The honor of being named National AP Scholar is granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four in all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams, which is truly quite an accomplishment. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge the academic achievements for the following students from Marlboro High School. Our commended students in the 2017 National Merit Program, when I call your name, please come forward. Krishna Batuda. Emily Emily Chang. Michael Conley. Evan Deng. Jennifer Franklin. Sean Colova. Amberita Kara. Zachary McCosley. Robert Landy. Melissa Lee. Matthew Lindbergh. Shanna Morgan. Uyaha Recurgi. Ashawn Agaraj. Mayya Abiscar. Rohan Greeb. Angelique Patel. Avni Patel. Manali Patel. Anakeet Sircar. David Stein. Michael Wang. Serena Yao. And Patricia So. Thank you, guys. Big to see you guys. Thank you. Our semifinalists in the 2017 National Merit Program. Paige Bedoff. Kristy Lee. And Alan Shankerman. Alan Shankerman is also our National AP Scholar. Alan, congratulations. Now turn the program over to Mr. Riden, our supervisor of extracurricular activities. Mr. Riden.
We're going to start with some activities. First, we have a Boy Scout who earned his rank of Eagle Scout. And I know there's a couple other Eagle Scouts being on tonight, so we need to put a synopsis of what a young man has to do to earn this rank. The fact that a boy is an Eagle Scout has always carried with it special significance, not only in scouting, but also as he enters higher education, business or industry, or community service. The award is a performance-based achievement whose standards have well maintained over the years. Not every boy who joins the Boy Scout troop earns the Eagle Scout rank. Only about 5% of Boy Scouts do so. Nevertheless, the goal of scouting, citizenship training, character development, and personal fitness remain important for all scouts, whether or not they attain the Eagle Scout rank. To earn the Eagle Scout rank, a Boy Scout must fulfill requirements in the areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. A number of specific skills are required to advance through the ranks. To advance, a Boy Scout must pass specific tests that are organized by requirements and merit badges. Merit badges signify the mastery of certain outdoor skills, as well as helping boys increase their skill in an area of personal interest. Of the 130-plus merit badges available, a total of 21 must be earned to qualify for an Eagle Scout, with 13 badges specifically required. While a Life Scout, the scout must plan and develop a service project to benefit any religious institution, school, or community. As a demonstration of leadership, the scout must plan the work, organize the personnel needed, and direct the project to its completion. I'd like to call up Jeffrey Allenoff. Jeff is a freshman at Marlboro High School and has obtained his rank of Eagle Scout. In order to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, Jeffrey had to do an Eagle Scout project. Jeffrey's Eagle Scout project was the creation of a promotional video on behalf of the Ashley Lauren Foundation, a charity committed to providing hope to help pediatric cancer families throughout New Jersey. I'd like to call up Alexandra Puccini. Alexandra Puccini is the recipient of the Congressional Award Silver Medal in Girl Scouts. The Congressional Award consists of four categories, including volunteering, physical activity, a personal goal, and excursion with an emphasis on community service. To earn the Congressional Award, she acted as a counselor to young adults with special needs. To fulfill the physical activity, she did competitive dance. And for excursion, she spent two nights in the woods with no electricity. Congratulations. On November 19th through 20th, 2017, 13 Marlboro students attended the JSA Fall State Conference at the Renaissance Hotel in Woodbridge, New Jersey. For the two days, the students participated in debates and other activities. We had three students take first place in the debates, and they earn their gavel. When they get to, they will move on to the winner of Congress. Janee Faraki. And Ralph LaRocca. This past summer, three of our students traveled to San Diego to compete in the FCC LA National Leadership Conference. Jennifer Ahn, Jennifer Franklin, and Nihha Anijiri competed in the entrepreneurship team event as a team. These girls worked very hard, and it paid off. They won a gold medal in the event. National History Day announced its winners for the 42nd Annual Kennet and Bering National History Day Contest. More than 600,000 students from around the world competed. Our senior division entry from each National History Day affiliate received an outstanding affiliate entry. This year, Marlboro High School's Business Learning Center students, Shanna Martin, Evan Deng, and Rebecca Loe were chosen to receive the honor to represent New Jersey in their senior group performance. I'd like to call down Avni Patel and Alan Shankerman. Avni Patel in Accounting I, and Alan Shankerman in Accounting II finished top five in the nation at the FBLA competition this past summer. I'd like to call up Riley Keating. Riley Keating is a senior member of our football team. He is our center, and he is first-team All Shore and second-team All Group Five. We had one of the best boys soccer teams, I would say, in the state this year. I'm going to call up three of our players that got postseason accolades. First is Ryan LaRocca. Ryan earned first-team All Shore and first-team All Group Four. Next, I'll call up James Weinberg. James is first-team All Shore, and he is the NJ.com Short Conference Goalie of the Year. Last on our soccer team, I'd like to call up Philip Ringel. PJ is, is that right? PJ is named first-team All Shore, first-team All Group Four, first-team All State, and he is the NJ.com Short Conference Player of the Year. PJ is one of the most inspirational people you will ever meet. Congratulations, boys. And last, I'm going to talk about our gymnast. She is not here. She's actually at practice, and she's at practice during every single board meeting that we have because she is, the way her team work. Melissa Ostarida is a junior. She was selected first-team All State, first-team All Shore. She was the short conference vault and all-around champion. She took second place on the beam and the floor. She was the Central Jersey State Sectional Vault, Floor, and All-Around Champion, and she was the overall second place in bars, fifth place in the all-around. She also broke three school records at Marlboro, which she broke as a freshman, then re-broke as a sophomore, and now re-broke them again. She is the vault champion at a 9.85 out of 10, bars at a 9.65 out of 10, and all-around 38.85 out of 40. Melissa has already verbal to Penn State as a sophomore. Cannot wait to see what she does this year. So congratulations to Melissa.
One of the things that we do as the awards that run across all six schools come up, like the National Merit Scholar, Eagle Scouts, that's why the first one goes a little bit longer because we try to give everybody the in-depth explanation of what those accolades actually are. So I'd like to call up Mr. Broberman for Howell High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's an honor to be here tonight. My name is Jeremy Broberman. I'm the proud principal of Howell High School. I too, as Mr. Boylan did, would like to thank the Board of Education, our central administration, our superintendent, Mr. Sampson. Obviously, a special night like this wouldn't happen without them, and all the support that they give us throughout the year. I'd also like to congratulate all the students who are at here this evening getting awards. As you can hear, there's some pretty impressive students here tonight, and we have some ourselves. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce the commended students in the 2017 National Merit Program. First up is Roxana Altis. I'm going to turn the microphone over to the supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. Pete Man.
Nice job, ladies. Congratulations. Good evening. I'm Mr. Man, supervisor of extracurricular activities at Howell High School. I'd like to go through our activities first. I'm going to go over our All Shore course team from Howell. We had 20 students accepted, it's the highest in Monmouth and Ocean County. I'm going to start with, I'm going to bring them all up, like you stated, guys, the first 16, and then we have some extras that have to go on. Josh Ricklin. Michael Olson. Maria Butts. Joe Crisanzio. Griffin Abel. Sam Dolan. Lauren Carter. Emily Soper. Harley Gofar. Lauren Hudson. Jessica Grino. Adam Pike. Jack Lee Smith. Dana Bernazoli. Jessica Dolch. And Biggie Fleisch. The next four people I'm going to call up are also All Shore course, and they were also named to the 2017 National Association for Music Education All Eastland Honors Course. Lindsay Chery. Dana Hall. Nina Sandow. and Yanis Setana. Still a couple more for course, hang in there. At this time, I'd like to bring up the following two people, Alex Guzman and Audrey At this time, I'd like to bring up the following 2 people, Alex Guzman and Audrey Chu. Congratulations. These young ladies were named the Merit winners of the 2017 National Young Arts Foundation Competition. They were picked out of 12,000 applicants from across the country and they were selected for their singing submissions. Congratulations, ladies. The 6th award. The following 6 students won the New Jersey Rising Stars High School School Classical Music Competition. Based on their selections of opera, they performed at the Winners' Concert in November for 2 sold-out crowds at the Albonwood Theater. The first one I'd like to bring up is Ciara DiMele. Debbie Clark. Harley Gofar. Alexa Chalik. Lindsay Cheryn. And Rachel Sheller. Now, the nice lady in charge of this is Mr. Gina McAllen. She is not here with us tonight. Without her, I don't know where these young ladies would be and these young men. But nice job and congratulations to every single one of you. Nice job. Moving on to sports, at this time, I'd like to bring to the podium Daniel Cacciatore. Daniel is the captain of our football team. He's a great young man, did a nice job for us this year. In the sport of football, there's the Maxwell Award, it's one of the oldest awards given out in the sport. It is given out to students that not only excel on the field, but excel in their classroom academically. Daniel was selected, he's one of 51 students who stay in New Jersey, selected for a Medal Maxwell Award. Daniel, congratulations. The next student I'd like to mention, she could not make it, she is our gymnast Monica Servideo. Monica was a state champion this year in the uneven bars. She overcame an injury last year. She did extremely well in freshman sophomore year. Last year's subcutaneous injury was bad, she can come back this year and did a great job on the uneven bars and was named state champion. Congratulations to Monica. And our last athlete I'd like to call up is Neve Hayes. Neve had an incredible season, she's had an incredible career at Howell. Neve is one of our cross-country runners. She was named First Team All Shore, First Team All State. She was also named Shore Track Coaches Association's Girls Cross Country Runner of the Year. She broke the Homme d'Or course record for Howell by 25 seconds, shattered the record by a previous holder. She had, like I said, an incredible career so far at Howell, is going to continue running. Do you want me to mention Tom? Neve is entertaining U Penn and I believe she's solid. She's so special and they're definitely going to steal grabbing Neve Hayes. Neve, congratulations. Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Now I'd like to call up Mr. Simon from Coltsneck High School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, again, I'll just echo the sentiments, we appreciate that we get to do this, to celebrate the fine array of students we had in all 6 of our high schools. We congratulate all the students that are receiving honors tonight, all the proud principals of all the other buildings, and we thank the Board of Ed and Mr. Sampson for putting together this evening. We're going to start with recognition of our Eagle Scouts, but I know my colleagues are probably tired of hearing me introduce our Eagle Scouts this way, but I just can't help myself. I myself am an Eagle Scout and one of 5 brothers that are all Eagle Scouts. And tonight, I'm actually very proud that while my 4th son will also be earning his Eagle Scout and be getting recognized tonight. The streak in my generation is extending as he is the 8th grandchild, grandson in a row, receiving Eagle Scouts. So needless to say, in the Simon household, scouting and being an Eagle Scout is not something we take lightly. And so it makes me even more proud as a principal to be able to introduce 3 young men tonight who have earned this rank. So I'm going to start out with Gennaro Ruggieri. Gennaro, come on up. Love that uniform, man. Way to go. Gennaro received the rank, Gennaro's a senior at Coltsneck High School, received the rank of Eagle Scout on October 6th. His service project involved building a walkway entrance at the Bucks Mills Community Center to help alleviate flooding both in the parking lot and at the main entrance. To complete his project, Gennaro collaborated with a local engineer and the head of the Parks Department to design the walkway. He then had to raise over $1,200 to pay for the proper materials, the bulk of which came by way of yard sales Gennaro held. He led a group of 50 volunteers for a total of 300 person hours to complete the task. Congratulations, Gennaro. Second Eagle Scout I'd like to recognize tonight is Robert Michael Holst III. Come on up, Robert. Robert is a junior at Coltsneck High School. On April 30th, 2016, Robert completed his Eagle Scout service project and was awarded the Ranko Eagle Scout on November 30th, which is located at a local nature preserve in Coltsneck. Robert led a group of 23 scouts, parents, and family members in his effort to improve the over-nature preserve. The project included removing an old sign, replacing it with an information kiosk, fixing a driveway by adding bluestone, assembling and installing 6 birdhouses, 1 owl house, adding trail markers, repairing 2 vandalized benches, and installing a flagpole, and that's all. Congratulations, Robert. Our third Eagle Scout being recognized tonight is Stephen O'Keefe. Come on up, Stephen. Stephen is a senior at Coltsneck, received his, he earned his Eagle Scout in March and just yesterday held his Court of Honor. His project was to restore the historic fence line at Mammoth Battlefield State Park. Stephen led 50 people during his effort, which included lifting fence line of a tenth of a mile to clear overgrown vegetation and debris. Stephen and his workers also replaced rotted wood and rebuilt the fence. The fence line sits at the hedgerow, the site of the most intense fighting during the Battle of Mammoth. To help complete this project, Stephen collected donations from Wegmans and Staples. Stephen is hoping to either attend the University of Notre Dame on the ROTC program or to attend the Naval Academy, which is ironic as he would be the first member of our LPS program to become a member of the Naval Academy. So we're looking forward to that and we hope that that will be the case for him. Congratulations, Stephen. And my final portion before turning it over to our rather lengthy but successful athletics piece with Mr. Arnejo, I would like to ask the following 7 students to come down. Please hold your applause till I read all of the names, actually 8 students. Dylan Adlin, Brian Chahansky, Sarah Clark, Michelle Dubrovsky, Rayanne Giannatassio, Sonia Priven, Ben Samarco, and Ryan Tompkins. These students are the Coltsneck High School PSAT and MSQT commended scholars for the class of 2017. Congratulations. Thank you. I'm now going to turn the program over to Mr. Arnejo, our supervisor of extracurricular activities, who will introduce several teams and students who are in recognition this fall in athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. I would first like to thank the administration and the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to recognize academic and athletic, the academic and athletic achievements of our students tonight. I would also like to congratulate the administration, coaches, parents, and students from our fellow district schools, who should all be very proud of what you've accomplished. To start the night off for Coltsneck Athletics, I would like to ask Coach Doug Phillips and the Coltsneck High School Girls Soccer Team to make their way down to the front. Although not all of them are here, I'll read the team member names. Victoria Spielert, Leila Rosenthal, Isabella Pecarrero, Jenna Buckley, Kristy McCula, Crystal Cutler, Isabella Fitz Henry, McKenna Burns, Lauren Feaster, Erin Crumble, Peyton Curle, Kayla Lee, Sedona Samaras, Kristen Gammerdella, Alexandra Ryan, Cassidy Stepnaski, Cara Camarco, Noel Conforti, Tara Walensek, Nicole Lowly, and Frankie Tagliaferri. This year's team won their second straight Shore Conference Tournament Championship, this time with a 3-0 victory over a very talented Freehold Township squad. It's been a pleasure to watch them over the past few years compete on the field. Congratulations on winning this very difficult tournament for a second straight year. I would like to recognize some of the following individuals for their individual honors. Lauren Feaster was named First Team A-North and First Team All Shore. Kayla Lee was named First Team A-North and First Team All Shore. She was also mentioned Third Team All State Group 4. Frankie Tagliaferri was named First Team A-North. She was the A-North MVP, First Team All Shore, First Team All State Group 4, and First Team All State for All Groups. Several of the players will continue their athletic and academic careers in the fall. Frankie Tagliaferri will head to Penn State University. Cara Camarco will go to Dayton University. Tara Walensek will go to Miami University of Ohio, and Nicole Lowly will attend New Jersey Institute of Technology. Coach Doug Phillips received the soccer award given to him by the NJSIAA earlier this month, so congratulations to you, coach, and congratulations to the 2016 Coltsneck High School Girls Soccer Team. Coltsneck Cross Country had one of its most impressive years in school history. Both our boys and girls cross-country teams had outstanding seasons. At this time, I would like to call Coach Joe Likes and Jim Schlens and the Coltsneck High School Girls Cross Country Team to the front. Team members include Colleen Meegerleth, Delia Russo, Eva Gibson, Rayanne Giannatassio, Katie Anderson, Natalie Shapiro, Elizabeth Ohoro, and Dominique Macia. This year, the girls' country team earned the following distinctions. They were Mammoth County Champions, Shore Conference Champions, Group 3 State Champions. They placed 6th in the Meet of Champions and at season to end, they were ranked 11th in the Northeast Region. Individual honors included, Delia Russo was named Third Team All State Group 3, Eva Gibson was named Third Team All State Group 3, Colleen Meegerleth was named First Team All Shore, First Team All State Group 3, and Third Team All State for All Groups. Coach Likes and Coach Schlens were named New Jersey State Girls Cross Country Co-Coaches of the Year by the Star Ledger. Congratulations to the 2016 Coltsneck High School Girls Cross Country Team. This year's Coltsneck High School Boys Cross Country Team met with similar success to that of our girls' team during the 2016 campaign. At this time, I'd like to call the boys' team down. Team members include Jordan Bramon, Matt Schaefer, Kevin Berry, Anthony Russo, Brad Dantwano, Liam Hoagland, Matt Hartman, Gavin McDonald, and Alberto Rodriguez. This year, the boys' cross-country team earned the following distinctions. They were crowned North Jersey 2 Group 3 Section Winners, Group 3 State Champions. They were 2nd in the Meet of Champions. They finished the season ranked 4th in the Northeast and 23 in the United States. Individual honors include Matt Schaefer, who was named First Team All Shore, Third Team All State Group 3. Kevin Berry was named Second Team All Shore, Second Team All State Group 3. Anthony Russo was named First Team All Shore, First Team All State Group 3, and Second Team All State for All Groups. And Jordan Bramon was named First Team All State, I'm sorry, First Team All Shore, First Team All State Group 3, First Team All State All Groups. And he finished in the Top 25 Nike Nationals held in Oregon earlier this month. He will be going to Iona on an athletic scholarship in the fall of 2017. Coach Jim Schlens was named Shore Conference Boys Cross Country Coach of the Year. Congratulations to the 2016 Coltsneck High School Boys Cross Country Team. Different medals for Coltsneck High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnejo. Now I'd like to call Mr. Jule from Field High School.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure tonight to, I'm really proud of all the students at Freehold High School have accomplished this basketball, both academically and certainly athletically. I'm going to begin by recognizing a number of our students who were and are National Merit commended scholars. As I say your name, would you please come down to the front? Brian Sorencion, Richard Dow, Ryan Goldstein. Zagary Leon, Rhea Tete. We also had several National Merit semifinalists. 2 of them were able to attend this evening. Rahas Karajadakar. And Ryan Kim. We also had All Shore course, and I'd like just to add a little bit to a previous kind of flirt with that All Shore course. As previously you were told, All Shore course is comprised of students from high schools in Mammoth and Ocean Counties. Students are, however, admitted only by audition. And if accepted, will follow a rigorous rehearsal schedule and learn high-level music. They will learn music in different languages, sing in a variety of styles, and work with a distinguished guest conductor. So it, it's very arduous and you can coast it down, but you can't, Ethan. Ethan has been a member of All Shore. This will be his 4th year, so from his freshman year on, he's made All Shore. And a new addition this year is Julie Ponenberg. I'm not sure if she was going to, yeah, I know, she was a little bit unsure whether she'd be able to make it. So we'll let her know tomorrow. Freehold High School had 3 Eagle Scouts, so I'd like to ask Nicholas Bond, Richard Dow, and Ryan Goldstein to come forward, please. Nicholas's Eagle Scout project was revolved around work for the Cadbury Environmental Center, and he really decided that he was going to roll up his sleeves and redo a map, include a map of the trails and some of the wildlife and plants that are in the area, so that if you're walking the trails, you know what you're looking at. And it was especially useful as the kids who attended summer camp this past summer could walk on the trail, see what they were looking at, and read about all the information about them that Nick had put on the sign. So a very hands-on, practical project, for sure. Richard Gao's project, first of all, he fundraised over $2,500 from the sale of drawers, bags, and scrap electronics. And with the money fundraised, he then went to the Chinese-American Bible School, and he repainted every single one of the 131 parking lot lines, as well as various handicap signs, arrows, stop signs, and then he turned around and landscaped the garden and the entire area, immediate area around the Chinese-American Bible School. With the, he was very frugal, and still had $1,500 to donate back to the church, so an excellent project. And for his Eagle project, Ryan, Ryan Goldstein wanted to combine this love of books and work toward his former Hebrew school, work for his former Hebrew school. And in his project, he designed and created seven furniture-grade carts. Two were going to be for books and five for school supplies. And this involved purchasing the plywood, cutting it according to plans, sanding, attaching the edging, assembling the planks into the cart shape, and then lacquering the carts. The project was completed in four work sessions over three different intensive weekends with help from friends, family, and scout volunteers. So congratulations. And now I will introduce Mr. Jason Longo, our CETA, who's here for recognition of our athletes.
Thank you, and congratulations to all the medal recipients this evening. You should all be very proud of your accomplishments. I'd like to call down our field hockey team this evening. So the Freehold High School Field Hockey Team had another successful season. Even with the transition to a new coach, the team never skipped a beat and picked up right where they left off last year. The team defeated rivals Middletown North and Freehold Township to capture a third consecutive A-North title. The ladies also defeated Milburn in a very gut-wrenching game that came down to sudden-death penalty strokes to win a Nord Two Group Three State Sectional Title. I'd like to call up their names, and I'll also recognize a few individuals near the end. Head Coach Donna Heim, Assistant Coach Mr. Stan Parker, Tori Teetentaller, Alex Bach, Alyssa Correa, Lindsay Kohler, Nicole Ray, Belli Reynoso, Gabby Arancio, Katie Burns, Kelly Goveya, Nisa Mackie-Garrow, Gillian Rogirio, Catherine Ricker, Nicole Fassani, Taylor Bennett, Megan Sharkey, Alyssa Barba, Liz Fediga, Sarah Urbine, Abby Williams, Haley Schneider, and Bridget Clark. We have a couple of, a couple of those individuals received individual accolades, and I would just like Alex Bach to step forward. Alex was All-A-North Division. She was also First Team Allshore. She is currently deciding whether to attend Monmouth, Lehigh, or Villanova to continue her academic and playing career. Alex? I'd like to call Tori Teetentaller to step forward. That's a tongue twister. It's really rough. Tori was First Team All-A-North. She was also First Team All-Ashore, and she was voted as the A-North Player of the Year. And Tori has chosen the College of New Jersey to continue her career at the collegiate level. Congratulations, ladies. Nice job. And that wraps up the medal portion for Freehold High School. Congratulations again to everyone, and everyone have a safe, happy holiday season. Thank you, Mr. Longo. I'd now like to call up Mrs. Higley, the Field Township High School.
Good evening. I'd like, once again, to congratulate all the students who are in attendance and the parents for all the time and effort that you've put in helping your students get to our events. And I know the time consumes in all the Board of Education and the administration. First off, ones we'd like to honor are students who received perfect scores in different sections of the SAT. So as I call your names, please come up. Emily Baum, senior, had a perfect score in the critical reading section. Charles Senular, a senior, had a perfect score in the critical reading practice. Michael Corrick, perfect score in the math section. Sean O'Donnell, even perfect score in the math section of the Reefside SAT. And Anna Landry, a senior, perfect score in the evidence-based reading writing course. I'd also like to recognize our commended students for the National Merit Scholarship. We have Charles Senular, Hannah Goldberg, Lee Tankey, Brian Contra, and Maya Kurzmann. Freehold Township also had three Eagle Scouts, so Zach Simon, Jacob Nelson, and Stephen Crackedin-Tettle, please come up. As you heard, Zach comes from a family of Scouts. His project focused on improving his high school. In an era when school safety is paramount, Zach came up with an idea to increase student safety during our potential lockdown. This was done by designing and installing blackout shades throughout every classroom and window at Freehold Township High School. Zach spent many summer days with his family and friends and crew to help him achieve his goal, and the installation was complete, and we've already used it for two lockdowns. It's been very successful. Jacob Nelson joined the Scouts also in second grade as a way to meet people. He said he didn't know or expect that it would lead to some of the best experiences of his life. Jacob attributes many of the opportunities he's had to his time in Scouts. For his service project, Jacob set up a 20-foot flagpole on an 11-foot by 11-foot base in front of Oakley Flomis. The bricks that he used can also be engraved with hopes that proceeds from that, the engraved bricks will go to Freehold Township Heritage Society. Stephen Crackedin-Tettle also began scouting at the age of six, and his goal was to help the environment. To that end, Stephen's service project was the construction of four backhouses at Camp Topaninos. Included in the backhouses are educational packs for the campers to better understand the environmental benefits of bats. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Poseid, who will recognize additional Freehold Township recipients.
Thank you, Matthew Borland, everybody else that came out this evening. Field Township High School cannot be more proud of our musical accomplishments so far this year. We had nine students selected to the Allshore course. I'm going to ask them to come up as I call their name. Tatiana Burke, Alissa Prudino, James Harris, Ryan E. Martin, Lori Kneeb, Alexis St. Cora, Dana Skurva, Emily Schultz, and Sydney Wisb. We also had four students named to region two band and percussion ensemble. This came in a little late from my band director, so I'm not sure if any of them made it out this evening, but these four students will have a chance to audition for Allstate Band and Orchestra in January. The four students we have are Matthew Gallego, Chris Garrick, Ababel Kim, and Dominic Scallion. Congratulations again to our Allshore course and all-region band honorees. Athletically, Freehold Township is celebrating both individual and team accomplishments this evening. We had the following individuals earn various accolades for their achievements throughout the fall 2016 season. I think only Adrian is here, so I'll save him for last. We have Jada Colbert. She was Girl Soccer First Team Allshore. Her sister Jasmine Colbert was also First Team Allshore in Girl Soccer, Third Team Allstate, and Jasmine was the A-North Player of the Year. Anthony Lottie in football was First Team Allshore, and he will be continuing his football career at the University of Pennsylvania. And then Adrian Rahas. Come on up, Adrian. Adrian's Boys Soccer Player. He is First Team Allshore and recently committed to continue his soccer career at Fairleigh Dickinson University. And as I said, we also had some team accomplishments. For that, I'm going to ask the field hockey team to come on up. They've been hanging out in the back. Our field hockey team is pulling double duty this evening, and by that I mean we are recognizing them not only for their accomplishments in terms of wins and losses, but more than that. They won their third consecutive Central Jersey Group Four State Championship this year. But maybe more importantly, they were voted the Monmouth County Sportsmanship Award winners by the field hockey referees. This is a testament to Coach Kara Misery and her assistants, Coach Nicole Aluzi, Coach Brittany Deutsch, and Coach Eric Delott. We are proud to win, but we are proud that we win the right way of positive sportsmanship. So congratulations to all the girls on the field hockey team. Aleena Andrea, Jessica Applegate, Renata Bowdy, Emma Buttram, Raven Dunn, Julia Erickson, Sarah Fackel, Madison Hoskins, Samara Malala, Kirsten Murphy, Kaylee Pernick, Samantha Perskin, Gabriela Spielert, Madison Stein, Brittany Tomachevich, Haley Verga, and Callie Williams. Congratulations. Okay, congratulations to all of our award winners. Have a great evening, everybody. Happy holidays.
As the host school, they have the distinction of going last, but certainly not least. I'd like to call Dr. Angelozi from Manalbey High School.
Thanks and quaint now. Thank you, Mr. Sampson, the Board of Education, and the rest of the central office administration for supporting and recognizing our schools and our students throughout the school year. Additionally, I would congratulate all of tonight's district medal recipients. And this evening, I have three academic accomplishments that our students are being recognized for: National Merit Scholarship Commended Students, National Merit Scholarship Semifinalists, and National AP Scholars. And I know that Mr. Borland mentioned it before, and every year we do have National AP Scholars, but it's a huge honor when students accomplish this by the end of their junior year. And tonight, we have 10 of them. As opposed to calling the students up multiple times, I'm going to read off their names, followed by all of the academic accomplishments at once. We have three students that could not be with us this evening. They include Raymond Pasta, National AP Scholar and National Merit Semifinalist, Court Chen, National AP Scholar and National Merit Semifinalist, and Court just got accepted to Princeton University a few days ago, and Justin Musella, National Merit Semifinalist. And now on to the students that are hopefully still with us this evening. Benjamin Chan, National AP Scholar. Andrew Glazer, National AP Scholar and National Merit Commended Student. Rebecca Granowski, National AP Scholar and National Merit Semifinalist. Aditya Kumar, National AP Scholar and National Merit Commended Student. Kehe Kwan, National AP Scholar and National Merit Semifinalist. Maxwell LeBron, National AP Scholar. Jeffrey Marshall, National AP Scholar. Patrick Roach, National AP Scholar. Heather Berger, National Merit Commended Student. And Callahan Martin, National Merit Commended Student. With that, I'm going to hand it over to John Heim, Manalbey High School Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, who will recognize a couple of our student athletes for their extraordinary football season. Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Dr. Angelozi. Congratulations once again, everyone. Good evening, and congratulations to all of the recipients here from Manalbey High School and other high schools. It gives me a great pleasure to announce Manalbey High School's two athletic recipients for FRHSD medals tonight. I'd like to call it Naime Mayfield and Sal Tardona. Guys, proud. Our football team had an extremely successful season this past season, finishing an enviable 11-1, with a last loss coming at the state championship game. Two of the reasons for this season's success stand before you. Junior Sal Tardona was an essential part of our defense this season, notching 120 tackles as a middle linebacker. He was named First Team All-A-North and First Team Allshore. Junior Naime Mayfield was also an integral part of our offense this year, amassing 1,785 yards rushing and 26 TDs. He was named First Team All-A-North, First Team Allshore, First Team Allstate Group Five. Gentlemen, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. We will take a 60-second recess to get on with regular board business. Those of you who would like to stay, you're more than welcome to. Otherwise, happy holidays to all, and thank you for coming out to support your children tonight. So I'd like to continue with the superintendent's report at this point in time. Just a few notes. Obviously, the holiday season is upon us, so our holiday concerts are in full swing across our six high schools. Phenomenal shows, and the community turnout has been tremendous. I think the last one left is Marlborough's tomorrow evening. I think every other high school has gone. We were also fortunate on December 2nd to host a team challenge at the central administration building. An awesome opportunity for our students. Teams from each of our six high schools, along with Allentown High School, compete in an ethical challenge where they're presented with an ethical dilemma, and they have to debate and discuss that dilemma, and then teams are chose, selected as the winners by a panel of judges. And it's done in conjunction with the Greater Monmouth Chamber of Commerce, which is a terrific partnership, and they've been a great friend to the Freehold Regional High School District. It was a wonderful competition between our six schools. We had our executive student cabinet meeting last week. Dr. Moore, myself, and Mrs. Schneider from the curriculum instruction office worked with our cabinet members to go through. Dr. Moore, welcome to an empathy mapping exercise to really get at the heart of what students to really get at the heart of what does the student center of learning look like, what does student agency look like, what does personalized learning look like to them as that's the heart of our next strategic plan, which the development is underway. We're in year five of our current plan, and we're looking forward to the opportunity of rebooting all that's worked from that plan and extending that, really with a central focus around the individual student and the student experience as the heart of what we're going to do. Last Friday, we had our ROTC Annual Passing Meetup with Colston High School. Tremendous opportunity to see the hard work that that group puts in. They're headed down to Pensacola this year. Last year, they were named number two in the nation in terms of their unit. We're hoping for number one this year. And we also, on November 30, had a ninth and 10th grade admissions planning evening for our parents of ninth and 10th graders, sponsored by our guidance departments, and it's one of the things that we've done in response to a lot of feedback we've received over the past several years about really pushing down information about the college application process, the process of how do I prepare myself for life beyond high school, and from a parental standpoint, of an informational standpoint. And we've been running some of these ninth and 10th grade evenings and drawing 600, 700, 800 parents to them, so it's a testament to the guidance and operations of Ms. Allen and the guidance supervisors putting that together. That's been a nice addition to what we do. And then finally, I was honored to have an opportunity last Monday to meet with the Acting Commissioner on behalf of the Garden State Coalition Schools for a few hours with Kim Harrington, who is the Acting Commissioner of Education. And the point of our meeting was really to discuss some budget priorities as the budget season is upon us, just suggesting areas that we thought would be beneficial from a state perspective if you're going to maximize dollars and if you're faced with real difficult choices, where we felt that those funds were most important for all students. So it was a wonderful opportunity. And that concludes my report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Boyce to discuss the audit presentation.
So more included on the report's agenda is your acceptance of the comprehensive annual report, which is the annual process that you hired independent qualified financial auditors come in. They take a look at how they've done things through the year ended June 30. So the purpose of the financial audit is to give assurances to the community that the financial statements we're putting forward are fairly present. That is, in the most pure sense, the purpose of that audit, and those financial statements can be relied upon. And that's done for bond traders and any other members of the community who want to understand our financial position. So before I hand it over to the partner in charge, John Spisher, Mr. Sampson wanted to add something.
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge, you know, we went through a very thorough review, and as superintendent of schools, I have the opportunity to sit with the auditors as part of an exit interview and just to acknowledge the work of Mr. Boyce and Trish Smith and her role here as the administrator of finance. They've done a phenomenal job, and I think the auditors would speak to some of the exceptionalism in terms of the work that goes on behind the scenes, but this is a $200 billion operation. It's an incredibly complex operation, and keeping our financial house in order is, you know, one of our top priorities, obviously, and I feel very confident as superintendent of schools about how we've been approaching that through the work in our business department over the past several years. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Spisher for the audit report.
I'll try to do a little bit of both. I apologize for my voice a little bit under the wet tackle for you to hear me. We did just conclude our audit for the period ended June 30, 2016. The results of that audit are contained in two reports that you should have received. The smaller of the two is the auditor's management report. That report is required by the state of New Jersey, and in that report, they asked us to report on certain areas of compliance that might be important, ranging from financial plan reporting, purchasing, food services, student activities, transportation, et cetera. This is also the report for refining the comments or recommendations that we found during the course of our audit. And I'm happy to say that this year, we do not have any recommendations that are found in the report. So that's obviously good news and a testament to the good work that the finance department does. The second report, the larger of the two, is the comprehensive annual financial report for the caper. That is where all the numbers are. Obviously, there's a lot of schedules in here, hundreds of pages of numbers, which I'm sure you've all committed to memory by now. Before I get into it, it's important to note that the caper is supposed to be prepared by the district and handed to the auditor, and then the auditor audits it. In most of our districts, and our firm does over 30 districts, we actually assist the client with putting together the caper, assembling the schedules. I've been doing this for 30 years myself, and for the first time, I literally got it covered in covers from the client. As we were talking about before, it's very complex. This is a big district, but the report in and of itself is very complex. You've got several different methods of accounting in here, and the business office was able to turn the report out pretty much in its entirety, and that's a real credit. I've not had that yet before, and so that's really excellent. What that means is that I can do really the true auditor's job of basically inserting an opinion in the front, an opinion on the financial status. At the end of the day, that's really what you pay the auditor for, to render an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements are free from material misstatement, as Mr. Boyce pointed out. The best opinion that you can get is an unmodified opinion, which, again, I'm happy to report that you guys were able to do, which means the financial records were able to be assembled into this report. We were able to test the report through detailed testing and sampling and not find any material misstatements. So as Sean said, you can rely on this, whether it's for a bond issue or just public consumption, the numbers that are in here are not materially mistaken. That's, at the end of the day, really what you're paying me to do. The one schedule that I do point out in the report, which everyone has to turn to right now, if you're looking for one schedule to look at, I always recommend is C1. It's towards the middle of the report, after the notes of the financial statements, and it basically just shows you the operations of the district in a more detailed fashion, the revenue lines, the expenditure lines, and most importantly at the bottom, the surplus as to how we fare during the course of the year. And again, I'm happy to report that the district is in good financial condition. Okay, we do all this compliance testing. Yes, your financial statements are fairly stable, but at the end, you want to know where you stand fiscally, and you're in good position. Couple of things I'll just point out, a constant part of this each year, you fund your capital reserve. Your capital reserves are where you let money aside for subjects contained within your long-range facility plan. And each year, at the end of your penny finer operations, you're able to kind of seed that account by putting some money into your regular surplus in there. That means that if you have a capital deposit you need to take care of out of pocket, you can take care of it. If the state comes up with grants, they'll be able to match. You just did that recently, where you're able to take advantage of state funds where they match 40% of your money. Okay, in those cases, you guys did it through leases, but you can use your capital reserve for that as well. So always a good idea to do that, especially in a district of this size with a large plan where you have to take care of repairs and things like that. You've got a maintenance reserve, and you've got a cap reserve that are pretty well funded. That's excellent as well. And again, for many years in a row, you keep a very solid, consistent surplus. That's also excellent for the district. I'll take any questions from the board or from the public, anybody, if anything is worthy of reporting. Okay, I'll take one last second. Obviously, I joked about it being a big report. It is. Any questions we have during the course of the year, refer them to the business office, to the superintendent, and they can get them over to me and we'll have to answer them. Any questions?
Sir?
Sam?
A school our size, this is our size, is there a certain surplus we should have?
Economic question. Quick discussion on surplus. The state of New Jersey years ago talked about keeping your surplus at 2% of your operating expenditures. This whole concept of excess surplus, which I don't particularly care for. You have a $200 billion budget, and so the question becomes, what should your surplus be? On your order, not the hand side, that's up to management to decide. Some people might say, it's going to be three months of payroll we should have on hand. In these days where, you know, your main revenue sources of property taxes and state are very stacked, okay, there's not that many per se, there's raw, not one tax, so with 2% increase in state, it's generally flat, okay? So you really have to be conservative. This is my opinion again, on the order, I'm not supposed to give operation advice, et cetera. But at the same time, most of my district these days are conservative. So I levy your surplus. You have 2% outside, you have, quote, excess surplus, which you then turn into revenue to support your budget two years hence. So the excess surplus from this year, 2016, will be used at a minimum to support your 2018 budget. So it rolls back in. And if you look, and I know that Sean does this, you took like a five-year experience here, very stable going forward. So your surplus is pretty much where you want it to be. A little higher, a little lower, a little out of the way. I think you're in pretty good shape right now.
Thank you, too. I'm in a big house.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else? Again, I thank both superintendent and the superintendent of Business for their help and for their staff. Trish Smith, again, bears most of the abuse during the course of the audit, and it bears most of the slings and arrows that she does with her professionalism. So I thank you. Any questions? From Sean?
Thank you. And we're not, you know, I don't get much opportunity to thank the people that I work with, so I'm going to grab that opportunity right now. It's a great crew in the business office, this work, which is complex financial work. Trish Smith runs a point on that. Lorraine Simon works closely with her, but it's really everybody in that office throughout the course of the year that produces the information necessary to assemble that product. So I think that's worth recognizing, so I'm thanking you for your work.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Just one additional note tonight about the calendar that we're approving. It's the first draft of next year's calendar, so folks understand that we made some literally up-to-the-minute revisions before it goes to print, so that copy, which is on the website, will be updated tomorrow to reflect what we approved, the major...
Go ahead, I'm sorry. So actually, I felt the best way to disseminate the information on the first three calendars was to actually put those here in there. I also note that in there, so they're in there.
Even better, even better. Thank you.
Michael, did you want to add anything to your...
Actually, how about a curriculum committee update? Because our finance committee meeting, we met last week, but essentially you just got an overview of what we talked about, but last week, we also had a curriculum committee meeting, so I just wanted to talk about that. We discussed a master's degree research project that a staff member's proposing, and that's actually on the agenda for your approval tonight. We went on to talk about the learning center and academy application timeline. There was actually 688th graders that sat for the entrance exam test back on December 3, and the notification of the application status for the students should occur somewhere around March 1. The department is also beginning the process of compiling data for placement next year for the current eighth graders. We got updated on a computer science grant that we received. The first room to be redesigned for this is at Freehold, our own grant was for $86,000. So we've got an update on that process. The curriculum writing for this course actually just started today, I think. The administration filed a year-one interim report with the DOE, because when you get a grant, there's actually people watching and seeing what you're doing with that money. And the application for year two of this is actually coming up. With respect to curriculum writing, we heard about what the plans were for which classes were going to have curriculums written. There's actually 50 teachers involved in the process. And then finally, we wrapped up the meeting, hearing all about the high school graduation test requirements. Obviously, our last meeting, this was something that we talked about, so we went in-depth with that. And as you recall, starting with the class of 2021, they're going to have no access to alternative exams, and they are going to be the first class that has to pass specific PAR tests in order to graduate. And that was it.
And just to expand on that, Mr. Messenger, we still don't have a clear answer on that. We've made a request to the state about clarification, and we were advised that at some point this winter, there'll be more subsequent guidance regarding some of those students that might be in a class where they did not take PAR in middle school in some accelerated manner. They may not, they may ultimately be locked in, do not graduate with the hand side. So the Department of Education needs to sort that out for us, and we'll hopefully we'll get that information sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I just wanted to politically correct the answer, because as a lot of things that have to do with the state DOE, there's not a lot of definitive answers from there, but I didn't want to say that.
Next, we have public participation, and no one has signed up, so I assume no one wants to speak. How appropriate that is.
There are some agenda to the agenda. They're available in the back. They're all contained in the G section, personal section. So before we...
So the agenda goes from G1 to K2, and that includes the eventums that were added. Like, take that in one shot.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All right. Discussion's seen none. Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Rastatola?
Yes.
Mr. Granovski? Mrs. Canaria?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messenger?
Yes, for everything except I, one, no.
Now, Mrs. Sitter?
Yes.
Mr. Mose?
Yes.
Okay. Old business, new business. Far away from me to have a board meeting no longer than it should. My name would never appear in that sort of elongated board meeting. I do want to say, I want to thank the board for the support over the last couple of years that I've been president. This is my last meeting as president of the Board of Education. I enjoyed my time. I want to thank all the administrators at Central Administration and at all the high schools for all the hard work that they do. I have a little bit of wisdom. You can take it or leave it. At least remember my grandmother telling me, never take yourself too seriously. I hope we all remember that. Okay, and we have a... Motion to adjourn to the meeting?
Motion.
Sam?
Sam.
Motion.
Thank you, Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
For the last time. So shall you say, so shall I be, right? Thank you.